Hi, well, welcome everyone to the town hall. This is designed to be very informal, even though they have their fancy chairs here and stuff like that, it's still designed to be informal. We want to thank everyone for coming as part of this day-long festivity honoring Professor Sack and everything that he's done and to launch the inaugural series of the Alan Sack Lecture in Sport and Society is what we're trying to take a look at, sport and society. This is a great example that we're covering right now with such a wonderful presentation this morning. The students said wonderful things about your lunch and thank you for spending time with them. And I have a chance to meet another alumni who's gonna be grilling you as well. So I'd like to introduce Craig Mortali, who has been a great friend of the program from the very beginning, and his accomplishments speak for themselves, and he's done wonderful things and will continue to do wonderful things, and we're glad you're part of the UNH family.
Thank you.
And Dean Lombardi, who is the GM of the LA Kings, Go Kings, as we start the new season, and also a UNH alum, and we want to give the floor to you guys to talk a little bit.
Thanks, Gil. Some of you may have attended the Chris Berman Town Hall that we had a few years back that I hosted with Alan's help. Format is very informal, like Gil said, we're gonna do a little Q and A, so this is the part where Dean and I are in the living room just hanging out, talking, you'll listen, and then we'll take some questions, and then we'll go back to that format and just open it up, so we're gonna take a walk through your life, mister. Is that okay?
Really?
Yeah. Ludlow Mass, is that where it all started?
Yeah, we'll just stay away from the stories from down the street, right?
Well, maybe we'll discuss that afterwards, but I grew up in this area, and I got bit by the hockey bug in the early 70s, and every kid on my block had a Boston Bruins sweater, jersey. And when we used to play street hockey or pond hockey, or when our backyards froze over, the fight was who was gonna get to beat Bobby Orr. And a lot of times I got to beat Bobby Orr, sometimes ended up being Derrick Sanderson or Phil Esposito. What were your early influences on the game?
Clearly that team, but the other thing that I think a lot of us got attracted to was that Flyer team, and it was pretty neat. The one guy who just particularly came from a working-class background like we all were in our town was Bobby Clark, who was just like, you couldn't help but admire. Bobby Orr was almost too good, you know, can't be Bobby Orr, you know, but everybody felt they could be Bobby Clark, because you worked your tail off, you know?
Give the audience maybe a little context on who the Broad Street Bullies were, what the team was.
Were that old right now?
Well, I don't know, they may not be all hockey fans here. I remember that team very well, just a couple of thumbnails on the Flyers.
They were the Broad Street Bullies, and they were probably the one first team that really used intimidation as a tactic, and the Bruins were no...
Well, they started it, actually. That Bruins team was pretty tough, too.
This was really nasty. I mean, you had to, it was a man's game, and the Flyers were very, they were called the Broad Street Bullies, and their leader was Bobby Clark, and, you know, and you can still remember that series where they beat 'em...
Seventy-four, yeah.
Yeah, and the one thing that's neat about that, though, is the thought that I ended up working for him was probably the best three years, like, when I'm all done, it's not very often that you get to work with a guy you like, you really looked up to as a kid. And I remember, and he treated me like gold, like, when I got let go in San Jose, you know, it was a really hard thing professionally, but personally, he said, "You come work for me."
This is Bobby Clark, who's the GM of the Flyers?
The GM of the Flyers.
The greatest player in franchise history.
The greatest player ever, the guy whose jersey I'd wear, and you gotta be kidding me, and, I don't know, he kinda always liked me, knew I worked hard, and thought I had done a good job and everything else, but then he, he would sit there, and to sit there with your childhood idol, and like, he would pull out his cigarettes and have his coffee in the morning, and then you would be talking, and I was just, "I cannot believe I'm sitting here talking to this guy, and he's asking my opinion," you know, and then, but he's also the one guy, too, it's like, one thing you learn, too, when you meet guys that you think that are famous, inevitably you got them so far up there that they almost let you down. They can't meet the standard that you've put 'em on.
You put 'em on a pedestal, right?
Yeah, and then you're always disappointed, you find out they're human, but this guy was better than I thought, and that was really interesting as far as, of all the famous people I've met, that your idol was better than you even thought.
So did he take you under his wing and mentor you, mentor you?
Well, he put me on, and like, he would, he was all about team, and every, the way he played is exactly the way he was as a person, and I just, like I said, I drained everything out of him during those three years in terms of, you know, I had known a lot about building teams, but the emotional part from sitting with this man every day for three years was just like an education I never would've gotten, so, you know, when you take a step backwards, stick with it, and then you might end up, end up better than you were, you know?
What was the one lesson that you still use today that he taught you, as a, now that you've been a very successful general manager? Did he put any, one particular idea in your head that you abide by?
Yeah, there was an incredible sincerity about team. You hear a lot of guys talk team and stuff, it's about his candor or whatever, but he would actually get the veins coming out of his neck, and he always had little examples, like, there's never one thing that, you know, you could put your finger on, but it was essentially that every little thing mattered, every little sign mattered, you know? Tell you a story how he'd get Rick McLeish going, that's how a captain's gotta operate under pressure. Talk about Eric Lindros, you know, the veins would come out of his neck, talking about dealing with his parents, you know? But he never failed, whether it was getting off the bus, you know, how it was all about, there was a gesture there that meant it was about team, you might step aside for the trainer, and it was just incredible.
So he talks a lot about the interpersonal skills, yeah.
Absolutely, but everything was team, and that's harder more and more today than, you know, we struggle with that so much today.
So, first of all, I can't believe you got out of Massachusetts alive rooting for the Philadelphia Flyers, by the way.
Well, I was, the Bruins guy, but you couldn't help but love Clark, you know, I mean, hard nose, you know, no teeth and everything.
For those of you who don't know, Bobby Clark was missing the first six teeth right in the front, and he looked like a blonde curly-headed vampire coming at you on the ice. He was, he was, not a vicious player, but he was hard-nosed, he was a grinder. So when you're a kid playing hockey in the early, mid-70s, before you even get here, what's your ambition level? Where do you want to go?
Oh, I'm playing for Flyers or Bruins, man.
So you're thinking you're going into the NHL, you're gonna work your way up?
Either that or I had a shot with the Red Sox or Yankees, so I was all set, don't you worry.
You never thought beyond that at that age?
Yeah, I think, like I said, like I said this morning, I mean, every kid thought that, even the worst player thought he was going to, so nothing wrong with that.
Now, someone our age, the other seminal moment came about 10 years later, and that's, that's the US Hockey Team in 1980, Lake Placid.
Yeah.
Do you remember where you were for the, when you watched the Soviet game?
Yeah.
Where were you?
We were in that, that...
We're not back at the Campbell Bar and Grill again, are we?
No, no. Well, I remember it was on tape, though, so you had to hear it first, but I remember we watched it in that, with that black and white TV with...
The Hockey House?
Yeah, the Hockey House.
So, did you know the result?
Yeah.
And was able to avoid it, I think?
Yeah, we didn't, but it was still...
How much did that grab at your heart?
Pretty, that was a, that time, that time of the country's history, too, it had a, it wasn't just a game, that was clearly one of those events that would be...
Like a political event?
For sure.
But just the notion of college players?
Yeah.
Or soon-out-of-college players taking on essentially what's a professional team, and a Soviet communist team?
Yeah.
Explain how big that was, as someone your age, you were about, what, 18, 20 at the time?
Yeah. You know what, I really didn't understand the significance of it until Russia. Like, I, early in my career, when the wall came down, I spent a lot of time in Russia, and I'd been to Siberia on the back of pickup trucks looking for players, you know, and so, yeah, but I, it was kind of funny, like, 'cause you're always, that's always a part of you, and then when you went over there as an American, and they still are like, you know, whatever. And it was still a little dicey when I was going over there, 'cause like, I had the KGB following me once, 'cause I was in Chelyabinsk, 'cause I was there at nuclear thing, and there was still that little...
Lack of trust, yeah.
Yeah, but I saw the players, it was a place called Luschniki, and that's where all the Russian players trained. It was an unbelievable facility, it was, it was like a factory for athletes. They had this rink, outdoor rink, that went, it looked like for miles, and you would have kids on it, it was completely covered, and it was a factory. And these guys lived in that dorm, essentially, didn't see their families, and I remember going through and spending time with that generation, it was coming out, the older ones and then the next younger ones, and they were starting to get their freedom. But you could see with those guys, and I also met that Tickenoff guy, the coach, which was a real...
Well, that was, that was a hard guy right there.
Right, but what they, what they always talked about was the Americans had heart, they had spirit, and what you saw in that Russian system is that they had no chemistry, there was no personality, there was no spirit, they were incredibly disciplined and well-trained.
Programmed, right.
And programmed, and they were absolute machines, their training, their weight, their talent level was off the charts, you watch them scrimmage, you go, "Holy smoke," but they had none of this.
That's 'cause they didn't have freedom.
They didn't have no freedom, right, and that's the thing, and then when we got, and so it really hit me in 1980, and they would even tell me that, and even Tarasov was still alive at the time, said, "You know what, we clearly, that was the American spirit, just like the Canadian spirit, you know, we don't have that."
If you ever look at the post-game, when the Americans are going crazy celebrating down one end, and the Russians are leaning on their sticks on the blue line, waiting for the handshake, and you can see this puzzled look on their face, like, either, "Why are they acting that way?" Or, "I wish I could do that."
I think, I'm telling you, when you talk to him after, I think it was the second one.
I think so, too.
I really do, I think they wished they could've had that, because those guys won all the time, too, but it was almost like, "That was expected," and they never would have a response like that.
It was like business to them.
Yeah, and that's, that's the other thing, too, when we, when they come over and you try and integrate them with your North American players, you get a lot of, too, now, they're starting to get a little more Yosev Etskin jumping around and everything else, but even that part still is, it's, there's still that remnants of that communist system that just sucked it right out of them, you know, so...
So, here we go, 35 years later, in last August, past August, you were named the GM of USA Hockey for the World Cup coming up in 2016. Your speech, your acceptance was incredible, you brought in the notion of team, you mentioned George Washington as the first great teammate, and how he put, supplanted his ego for the idea of the nation, and then you brought up the USA team from 1980. Talk about that, that speech you gave and what this position means to you, now that you've, you've come all this way as a fan, and now you're in charge of the team, USA.
Yeah, that's pretty neat, you know, it's real, I really mean it, I've worked kind of with USA Hockey, but this is the first time they asked me to be in charge. You know, it's kind of one of those things you wish, you know, I didn't have to, you know, get drafted or anything like my uncles did, you know, in terms of serving their country, so everybody in my family went through that process that, you know, I was fortunate enough, I guess, not to have to go through, so it's almost kind of like it's the one chance I got to serve my country that my uncles and father had to do that I never was, so I kind of look at it a lot like that. And I kind of really like the idea, too, like, it's, even the Olympics now are, you know, beginning to commercialize, but there is something, too, that you're getting the best players in the world, and there's no free agency, there's no contract issues, there's none of that stuff. You're American, you're playing for this team, and I think there's, there's also a challenge now, I know when they came to me, they're a little concerned, that the team I cited in that speech, 96 team, and Ronick and all those guys, we were, we had established ourselves, that we were here for real, and it's kind of weaned a little bit, and they said, "You know, we gotta get this back," and that kind of like, in that speech, a lot of respectful talk with those players, you know, as much as anything else, and it comes, same thing like this morning, it comes from my heart, and that's what I feel, but it is, it's a unique, unique challenge, you know, and it's pretty neat, too, like, Lou Lamorillo's working with me closely, I think Godfather GMs, to have him call you up, "Okay, now it's your time," so, we gotta get it done, though, 'cause I actually feel a lot of pressure from them.
Well, I was just gonna ask you...
It kind of stinks, 'cause it's a one game, I mean, you could play great, and you know what?
Well, they, in Vancouver, they took it, took it all the way right to the end against the Canadians, the Canadian, the Canadian team, and that was such a great effort, and you felt like this is gonna be the year.
Yeah.
Does that, is there like a ghost of 1980 for the USA team? Because I don't look at a USA team in the Olympics without thinking of that, and it was such a one-time, just, they called it the Miracle on Ice for a reason. How, does that hover over you, that the note, that the idea that that's the highest accomplishment that the United States has ever had in hockey? Is it gonna be tough to match that?
No, because, see, that's what I tell, like, the 96 team was the greatest American team ever, so, look at the names on that team. I mean, and we were tough, we were mean, like, we could stand up to Canada, that was the first team to win in the Olympics, "We're better than you, we're not here as an underdog," right? And if you remember, like, they talk about Ruzioni's goal, Amanti's goal with five minutes left, we're down in Montreal, is arguably is every big a goal. The American team was like the spirit, like, you were clearly the underdog. The other team was, "We're better than you, and we're gonna show it," and that was why I cited that team, said, "You guys, next generation, you're supposed to follow up," because that team, 96 team, learned from the 80 team. That whole 80 team, if you look at the age of those 96 guys, all were in that age group where they were inspired by 80. Well, you guys now should be inspired by 96, and if you let this go, it's your fault.
How do you manage running this team and still having the Kings to deal with? I mean, it seems like, I know it's a little bit off, there's some offseason overlap there, too, but how do you manage all that?
I don't know.
When you figure it out, get back to me.
My wife asked me, so, it's, I'll figure it out, so, anyway.
Do you have enough of a staff that you can delegate certain things to?
Yeah, you know, because it's new for me, too, and you get paranoid, like I said, 'cause it's a single, like, it's, like, during the season, you can, like, beginning is, you're all in three, you can pull your hair out, but you know there's 80 games, there's a part of me that's getting, you know, you're almost anal where, "Okay, how do we make sure that," 'cause you get one shot at it.
It's a tournament, yeah.
And so, but you can combine the two, too, 'cause it forces you also, 'cause remember, in my job, in the end, it comes down to evaluating personnel. So it's actually forced me to look at comparable players at a high level that will translate, so there is clearly overlap, and it actually forces you to do exercises maybe you wouldn't do, so you could turn a negative into a positive, so...
Does it make your days more complicated now in LA, where maybe USA Hockey's like in one ear, you're thinking about it, but, you know, "We're playing the Sharks tonight, and I have to deal with that."
Yeah, yeah, well...
Multitasking.
Yeah, yeah, so, like, I don't know, there's always a fire drill going on, no matter what, even when you're winning, so it's just a different type of fire.
You've, you've been with the Kings since '06, so your new night season, when you took over, it's the quote, "Your team needs to get better while getting younger." Explain what that means.
It's a hard balancing act to do. You start out old, 'cause you gotta buy time and put a product out there, you're drafting 18-year-olds, so it takes time, but you should, let's, when you take over a bad team, people think you should get young right away, it's actually the other way around, your average age, 'cause you have to put a product out there, and you don't want to give up draft picks. So it's very similar to the model I used in San Jose, which is the Islander model, it's right up Bill Torrey's book, it's the same thing. So you start out old, you let your kids develop, and slowly they start going in, and that's essentially what it comes down to, but it takes, when you're drafting 18-year-olds, it takes time, right? You can't force them, it's one thing to be young, it's one, it's another thing to be good and young, and so the object, the balancing act is, "Okay, you're gonna be old, you're gonna be brutal." You want to get younger every year, and a little better every year. If you see a big spike, you're probably in fantasy land.
So, when I read a quote from you that said, "I don't care about the roster right now, I, you're growing your farm system, you're scouting, you're finding the next, you're going to Siberia in a pickup truck, and you're trying to figure out who the next big stars are, almost ignoring the current roster, because in a couple of years, they're gone."
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to watch, but you got no choice.
Now, is that the same formula you used in San Jose?
Yeah, exactly, same thing, it's Bill Torrey's formula, even though it's a cap system, it's still the Islanders' formula. If you looked at, they got, they're the one who had the record, actually, a tide is record in San Jose, where Torrey's team improved for six years in a row, but it was a little, that's the way you wanted, a little each time, and if you looked at his roster, when Trotch, Chimbasi, those guys come up, it was all getting younger, and it's basically the same thing, but it's a delicate balancing act, 'cause you want to get a little better, a little younger, and maybe you got a solid foundation.
You know, I could tie that back to New Haven.
What?
Bill Torrey and the Islanders?
What?
The, the New York Islanders were expansion franchise in 1972, I believe, and their farm club played at the New Haven Coliseum. The original New Haven Nighthawks were the Islanders' farm team.
Is that right?
Yep, for a year and a half, so, all those guys played here first.
Is that right?
Yes.
I thought they were...
Nyström, all of them, came through New Haven, 'cause it's right across the water, it was close, and then I believe the North Stars came in and whatever, but Bill Torrey was the general manager of that expansion team, and they were pretty lousy for the first three or four years, but by the mid to late 70s, they became very competitive in the playoffs, and then he won four Stanley Cups in a row.
Yeah, that's ridiculous, four cups.
And he had his bowtie, that's what I remember of Bill Torrey. So talk about building a coach, a scouting department and finding those players, I mean, you're not the one going out all the time. Talk about what kind of infrastructure you've had to develop with both clubs, the Kings and San Jose, to do all that work.
Yeah, well, it's like I was telling some of the students today, you do have to, you don't micromanage it, but you gotta macro-manage it. So I actually did the small work when I started out, where you actually are writing reports every day, and, 'cause it is a skill that you can learn if you work at it. So, when I started out, it was doing a lot of scouting, writing reports, making lists, and then, inevitably, the best way to learn that is be wrong, it's whenever you make your list, you look four years, you go back and look at it and say, "Wow, that was brutal," 'cause you're making projections on 18, 19-year-olds, I still got my list from 30 years ago, and you know, "Oh, they smoke," you know? And you try and minimize that as you gain experience, you're never gonna be perfect by any stretch of imagination, but that's where it starts. So then, when you become the boss, you know the infrastructure you want to set up, and the important thing is, it's just like, you know, like they say, intelligence doesn't have any answer, it's asking the right questions. So when you set up your scouting staff, I don't go micromanaging, but I know when I go into the rink, I can ask the right questions, I said, "I'm not telling you what to do, here's what I see."
But you've done the job, so you know what you're supposed to be doing, right?
So, I can't, I'm not gonna, you see this kid play 10 times, I see him play once, I might be seeing him having a C game, so I'm not, and that's where the GMs, and I made that mistake once in my career, actually, I did it, too, like, six years ago, which was really stupid, 'cause I knew better, and you come in, a guy sees him 10 times, you see him once, and, you know, you're, you influence your guy, 'cause he thinks, "Oh, I better do what the boss says," where you gotta get out of that moment, but you better ask him the right questions, "Okay, I see this, I see that, yeah, but Dean, I've seen him four times, I know that's an off thing," and that's essentially the way it, you know, you don't micromanage it. The other thing, too, it's no different than running any other, whether you're in the front office, you gotta walk the ground floor or walk the loading dock once in a while, so you get out there with your boys and show, "Look, I know what it's like to be out here."
So you're listening to give and take with your people, you want that, you want their honest opinion, you don't want them to be intimidated into what the boss really wants me to tell them.
Yeah, and yet, the next challenge now is trying to figure out a way to use statistics, but I haven't found it yet. I really haven't, I wish there was, but it just doesn't work.
Well, some people have said your method is similar to Moneyball in baseball.
Yeah, I put that out there.
But that, all that cyber stuff, that doesn't work in hockey, right?
Are we on tape here? That's a red herring, I loved it, 'cause I, I don't like Moneyball, I've told people, like, this whole, they haven't won anything.
Well, that's exactly my point, every summer with the Oakland A's, how great they are, Moneyball, they haven't won anything.
I think it's a great check-off, to think you've got this magical system, and if you did, why would you go brag about it like he did? That makes no sense, if you really...
Giving away your secrets, right?
We're giving away your secrets, but I love the fact everybody thinks that I've got this thing, and I let them go with it, say, "Yep, just keep looking for this," sometimes it's better than having it and hiding it, it's not having it and then think that you got it, so, and anyway, if you look at my track record lately on some of the decisions I've made, they say, "Well, that formula ain't working too well," so...
Barry Melrose is a former colleague of DS's, man, and we've played golf a time or two, and one time I told him that you and I went to school together, and I said, "What do you think of him?" And he said, "Great guy, great hockey guy, but the thing he emphasized most was, 'He's a very hard worker.'" Tell me about the personal qualities it takes to do your job.
He just gotta be like my old man.
Well, I was gonna get to that later, but...
That's simple. Now, you grew up watching your father work a double shift, then worked the third shift as a janitor and take you to work with you, like, 'cause I was, you know, I kind of grew up my grandmother, then when I got old enough, he would work the double shift, come back, get me, and he'd take me while he was cleaning the offices at the Big Wheels, and then, on weekends, he'd still be in the reserves, I mean, if you can't get a work ethic watching this guy, you got a problem. The thing I was, like I was telling the other group, though, I never forgot, and I still think of it to this day, like, he would, when he would do the night shift, and do the janitor stuff, and do the big shots offices, he'd, I was like, you know, I'd help him mop and or whatever, and he'd say, "See this guy here? This guy's a jackass. He treats me like dirt." He said, "This guy's a good guy, he treats me like a human being." He says, "Don't you ever forget, when you get one of these offices, that guy cleaning your office could be someone's father." And it's unbelievable, when I see the guy come in late at night cleaning my thing, just a little thing, I'll take my wastepaper basket and throw it away for me, he's so grateful, it's 'cause of my old man, my old man's been in that seat, so, but that work ethic, you make mother families like that, they're all, you know, Smith and Wesson, you know, all these are guys that are all working.
So your dad was a master sergeant in the Air Force?
Yeah.
He fought in Korea and Vietnam, is that right?
No, no, I didn't Vietnam, my uncles were Vietnam, I was too old.
He just passed away last year, is that correct?
Yeah.
Besides the hard work, the work ethic, when you're at your job on a daily basis, how does he come into your mind? How does he direct what you do? What quality of him decides hard work? Is there something about his personality, or something that he taught you along the way?
Yeah, I tell this story, too, when I did his funeral, it's amazing how you remember certain things, like the story I told today, I know exactly where I was when I showed up dead catcher. We were playing in a tournament, a San, like, we were going to Western Mass, and I was, I should've been pitching, but for the team, I, my father said, 'cause he was coaching a team, says, "To have a better team, you need to play shortstop, let this guy pitch, if I put you here, blah, blah, blah." And I, I was, we were walking from the shed to go to the thing, and I said something about the guy pitching, and he turned around, and he smacked me so hard, right in the face, he says, "You never, ever say that again." I mean, now I would be child beating, you know, I mean, but, you know, back then it was a little different, it wasn't like he fished me, but he freaking let me have it, and put his, "Don't you ever say that about a teammate again." And, so again, I mean, it wasn't, don't get the wrong impression, it wasn't child beating, but back then, yeah, back then that wasn't a big deal, when you spanked the guy, slapped him a little, and so on, and I never forgot that. It, I can remember, I know exactly where it happened on the hill of the thing, and I, I don't know, he was a big, and he couldn't stand selfishness, like, he was a big union guy, big into the military, and it was all about, you know, team, and I think I got as much of that from him as Bobby Clark, you know? It was just slammed into you, I don't know, you know, he grew up in a family of 12, and then, I don't know, but that, that incident there was, I mean, I never forgot that, and I don't think he's ever said a bad word about a teammate ever since then.
Go back to your job for a second, is it more difficult being in your position in a big market like LA as opposed to, say, San Jose or smaller, smaller city? Do you feel more pressure in LA?
I'm not sure, I don't, I think any of, even the Nashville guys, I think, one thing Torrey told me a long time ago, too, though, like, "Don't read the media, if you're gonna read it, you're gonna be in trouble," and that was his big thing, so, I think every read it, you're gonna be in trouble. And that was his big thing. So I think every general manager, the Nashville guy, Florida, we feel the same pressure to want to win. The extra pressure comes if you read the media and start believing. You just can't, you know? Part of it, you know, there's so much coverage. So if you're in New York or Toronto, it's unbearable. I don't even know if those guys can get away from it. But the reality is, again, that's what, you know, and Bob Poulphier told me, too, he says, the problem with your job is everybody thinks they can do it, and they have no clue on what it's like. But yeah, you're gonna have to understand the call, and this is gonna break, that you're an idiot, and you can't let it affect what you do.
Now, you have a special relationship with Bob Poulphier, you know, the folks who...
Well, he's my father-in-law, so.
But he used to be general manager of the Blackhawks and coach.
He was actually the first coach of the Kings, which is really ironic.
Under Jack Kent Cooke way back when, right?
Which was why, and then he made the Marcel Dionne deal, and my father-in-law quit, because they had a big character team, and they went the other way, and then they went to Chicago.
Well, you've mentioned all these other GMs, Bill Torre, Lou Lamarrillo.
Yeah.
Any of these guys, besides your father-in-law, serve as a mentor of sorts to bring you along?
Lamarrillo, Clark were probably two of the most, Louis was the most structured dude things right. Clarky would have been the emotional side. So two of the best teachers imaginable. When I first started out, Lamarrillo, when I got the job in San Jose, I clearly wasn't ready. I mean, I don't know, I was 26 years old. They're making me the GM. It was a gong show. They had the three-headed monster. I was scared. I was scared out of my wits, you know? Like, the owner says, I'll give this kid a chance. And I flew to New Jersey, and I was scouting a Jersey game, and went to see Louis. I said, I don't know what I'm doing. You know, I knew, you know, I don't know if you're ever ready-ready, but it was kinda like, I was the youngest GM in sport, actually, at the time. And I'll never forget it. He brought me down to his office. His team bus left, and he put his entire infrastructure up on the board, gave me the whole lecture about team, and every guy in the band has to play the right way, gave me all his files, a lot of Vince Lombardi quotes. And then he even had a fly, he says, that said, you know, when the media gets on you, read this. You know, so if you're gonna read the media, read this. And it would be something about your own self-esteem and everything else. And then, his whole thing was there, and he missed the bus. It took him four hours, and I never forgot it. I walked out there, I'm ready, you know? So there's people like that, that was very fortunate. And I practice still what he, you talk about infrastructure and keeping people all right. And the guy's got, what, three championships? There's a reason, you know? So that was huge, you know? Bill Torre was great to me. Harry Sinden's a genius. So I actually hit it right with those icons. We're kinda going down. And when I was the youngest guy sitting in a GM's meeting, you had Bob Ginn, Sir Savar, Harry Sinden, Cliff Leach, you're like, what am I doing?
In the Hall of Fame, basically.
Yeah. It was like, I'm a, if a young guy from the States didn't play in the league, and like, but you should keep your mouth shut. And eventually, once they figured out that you listen, that you're not coming in like some smart guy, and they actually all took me under their wing. It was pretty neat.
Let's take some questions for a little bit. Don't be shy.
Other than, this morning, you mentioned the sentiment you felt when you won the championships. But other than those games, what game, as you look back on your career managing, is most prominent in your mind, and why? What happened to that game that makes it something
Well, when you win in the finals, there's a road to it. But I, probably, the first time they came back from 3-0 thing was pretty amazing to watch. Like, we were down 3-0 to San Jose. We were, the first game was embarrassing. We had completely outplayed.
Three games to nothing.
Yeah, we were down 3-0. And I probably, to think that they went back, brought that series back and won game seven in their building, and beat them, like, really beat them. I'm like, that was about as impressive as I've seen. Because it was, it was the culmination of an incredible turn of events, that you wouldn't quit. And once they, and I remember the guys in the locker room saying this, after they won it, they were totally cool. It wasn't like they were, they were real pros. They'd already won a cup. They come back, win the game seven, and Drew Doughty's coming on a shower, and goes, we're gonna win this whole thing. And damn defeat. And that's just the way they played the whole. We had all of them, we had three more game sevens, but they knew they were gonna win. So that series, Anaheim wins seven games, Chicago wins seven games, but all of those knew they were gonna win. I was talking about that today. I don't know how they, you know, but there's a metaphysical part to this, that if you can get the science of that stat, hey, so, it's probably the other.
But where did that confidence come from? The fact that they had won one before? Just comfortable as a group?
I was saying that to those kids, you know, does winning breed chemistry? Chemistry breeds winning, but you know you can feel it, right? I mean, you've been around sports teams. You know, I was telling those kids the same thing. You could tell, like, I'm good friends with the Dodgers, they're Nick Colletti. You could tell his team, he even told me again this year, even though it was the GM, he's still around, there's something missing. They got all that talent, all that money, something missed. You hear the Giants won it. I know Sabian's a good friend of Ned's, and I know Sabian's team would walk around in a locker room.
Yeah.
You could tell the Giants weren't gonna lose. Now, I don't know what the heck that is. But there's something there, and we had captured it. And then last year, we were the opposite. We didn't point fingers at each other, but clearly, we were the grumpiest team in the league.
Well, some of that comes from the top, though. Depends if we...
I was trying like that.
Not you. No, no, no. No, 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 no. I mean, the coach, I mean, you have a very interesting coach. Then I wanna talk about him later, but...
You figure him out. Let me know.
Well, we're gonna talk about that in a minute. Any more questions?
Yeah. What do you think is the future direction in terms of technology and broadcasting as relates to the NHL? And one reason why I'm, the reason that is that we have two UNH alums, Brent Fisher and Dan Kimchi, who are working with Major League Baseball Network to help launch the NHL channel. And, you know, so I'm just trying to see, where do you think it's gonna go? Because you're a little bit of a step back behind some of the other leagues.
Well, I think they've made a lot of strides. If you look at some of the camera angles now, it's pretty good. Like, and the other thing, hockey's taken a big step because of the high definition. The game looks so much better in high def, because you can see the puck. So I think they've made strides, but you're right, you still have an issue of, you know, you gotta be careful where you get those camera angles, because you got all those, you can't put them in front of the people, so they're kinda like hanging over the top. But the other thing, I think that they don't, like, at ESPN or the NFL Network, their storytelling is off the charts. Like, I, whether it's, you know, I've heard some of the things that you've done, or whether it's, you know, the 30 for 30, or you watch the NFL Network, but their ability not only to visualize, but tell stories is incredible. You don't have to be an NFL fan to catch, you know, a certain segment and be intrigued by it. And I think that's where the NHL also has got some work to do in terms of that portion. You know, it's one thing to say, all right, here's a camera, gonna follow this guy around. This is what he does on game two. I mean, that stuff. You're getting off the bus, and here's some guy, you know, getting, you know, whatever. I mean, that stuff's done. That's not gonna, you know, it's not gonna springboard you beyond the other sport. So I think that's, they're lacking as much in storytelling, I think, which they're gonna improve on, but they got a ways to go.
Their storytelling is good in-game, though, I notice. Like, they added the reporter between the benches with McGuire, you know, on the NBC games. That's a big step up, because you're, now you're getting live, you're right there on the ice, and you're getting ground level, or ice level analysis, as opposed to whoever's upstairs. I mean, that's a, that's a, to me, that was a big change.
Yeah, yeah. No, and you get a feel for it. Those guys down there are pretty good. You know, like Brian Ingwijn, they're like real pros. You know, so, but you're right, there is still some work to be done. And I think it's, hey, there's a lot of innovation there for people that wanna take the next step.
You talked about managing up.
Did I?
Yes, you did. What's your philosophy on managing up? When does it start?
Well, it's really not your philosophy. It's like, you don't have a philosophy. You better adjust to the guy who pays the bills. So if you wanna have a philosophy and do what Lamarrillo did, good luck, but you're not gonna have your job very long. So basically, it comes down to, you have to adapt to your owner. And that, and that's an issue at degree. In LA now, I got the best owner man. I, he's, it's not only he fun, he doesn't, he never turns me down for money. Isn't the, the biggest issue is that, just like I said, he doesn't read newspapers. He's taken criticism. Like, he rebuilt the entire downtown LA, and he's taken his share of criticism, and he realizes that, you know, I'm not gonna let those people make my decisions for me. So, so I'm very fortunate in the owner I have.
And for those who don't know, who is that?
Mr. Phillip Anshuus. He's like, what, number four on the country?
He owns arenas, he has an entertainment company, he's a big builder.
AEG and all that is one, I think, 10% of his empire. I once had a meeting with him. I had to come in, and he goes, I was going, he's got his advisors coming in.
It's also nice he owns the building, by the way.
Well, yeah, but that's...
Your building.
Right. AEG and all those buildings in China and everything else are 10%. I had a meeting once, and he's kinda really a cool guy. He's kinda like a cowboy. He's kind of a little guy. He is. He wears cowboy boots. He's a Colorado guy. And if you saw him, he stands in line for his own hot dog at the Staples Center. You never know this guy was, and he clearly doesn't want the center of attention. And he was in a meeting, and he's, I said, man, sorry, Phil's in a good mood today. I'm with Dean. The guy just sold an oil well for a billion dollars. A billion dollars. I mean, it was like one transaction. So his money's really in oil. This AEG and Kings are like this on his thing. I think the reason he likes it, because his wife is more of a fan.
So this is like play money?
Yeah. It's not even close, you know? But, but he's a really, he's the opposite. Like, you see these guys, you know, I don't care. I don't want out getting into it. Like, you look at...
We're off the record, by the way. You can mention the...
Well, we're only the Redskins, for crying out loud. I mean, when you see, we all know as general managers, when you see these owners where they gotta make themselves the show, you're in trouble.
By the way, the guy who asked you that question is a diehard Redskins fan, so you picked the right guy. Because I'm on here all the time about Dan Snyder.
Well, and everybody, it's funny, the levels of, the levels, everybody's gotta manage it. It's a man, it's just what percent of your time? So I, yeah, I gotta manage my guy a little, but I'm probably the best in sport in far as, you know, but again, you've won two cups, so maybe I'm saying that now. One more year like last year. But it, you can usually, when you, Jerry Jones, you know, like, okay, it's a little too much. It looks like they've kinda got it going again now. And then again, it's a son running it, so it's not really a GM. But you can really, if you see that owner starting to make himself front and center a little too much, and they start, you know, becoming, listening to everybody, that's the other thing that happens, right? Because they don't know. They listen to everybody, and you can't execute your plan. Because you got to go through, just like in LA, like, you're gonna have to go through some hard times to be any good. And a lot of owners don't wanna wrag that out. They'll see an editorial and say, oh, we gotta do something. I'll go spend, and that almost happened to me with Louis. He wanted me to go get a COVID check. I'm like, I don't want him. I don't care if he's gonna, this guy isn't, you know, they don't want him. And I almost got fired over it, but fortunately, he went to New Jersey, and Anshuus was still backing me at the end. But I, my president at the time wanted me to go get that guy's, but that can happen, because he would have sold tickets, he would have got a buzz on, you know? But I knew there was no chance you were gonna win with that guy if you wanted to win championships.
So would you say he's more hands-off as an owner?
Yeah. But he's hands-on, because he wants to know and never forgets what you say. Like, the problems we had this year, like the meeting he gives me once a year in Vegas, he calls you in, here's what you told me last year. You got the 10 things written down. He goes, check X, check X.
So he's at a distance, but he's paying attention.
Oh, yeah. But you don't, I got no problem with that. He's paying attention to what you said and what happened and didn't happen. He's not listening or getting off plan or listening to everybody, you know, and thinks they know your job. And so it's like, I'm gonna let you do your job while you're in the position where a lot of owners, you know, I think that's one of the Red Sox problems this year. They had, you know, look with Epstein leading. You could tell that there's an element of this, they're not on the same page. You know, somebody's worried about credit, and then the players start getting a feel for it. Well, if the owners are worried about credit, then why shouldn't I worry about credit? But you can usually tell. You look at the Red Wings. What a great owner eligible. He's played the game, he knows when to get involved, and he knows when to step out, but he never makes himself the show. And you look at his championships, right? So usually, when you see those teams that have won, now, you could come back and say, well, what about the Yankees with Steiner? Kind of throws it out the window, right? I don't have an answer for that. But, boy, you read the horror stories there. I mean, but he won, so I guess it can be done.
Another question?
So along with the Hockey World Cup, World Championship is gonna be on the 2016 as well. How does it impact the appeal of the Hockey World Cup?
The World Cup?
And the Hockey World Championship, International Hockey Federation sanctioned event is also in 2016.
You mean the one that goes in, the one in April and May?
Yes.
Yeah. It won't affect that, because it's in September, right?
I know, but...
It's, well, it's also very different, because the World Championships, you're not getting the best players, right? That's, that, that's, like, that tournament there, it's amazing. I was there this year. The men, the Europeans just still love it. And they're, and you're not getting the best players, because they could still be in the playoffs. But then, like, when the players get knocked out, like Ovechkin comes and shows up for the last game. That's a very different feel than the World Cup, where everybody's gonna have the best players in the world. So I don't think it really has much of a, much of an effect. Then you got a lot of players that don't wanna play in the World Championships, right? There's no money in it. All they, you get hurt, and they don't wanna travel across, you know, pay a check. What's your, are you, what's your national, what are you?
I'm Turkish.
Turkish? Oh, there's no hockey there, is there?
No, definitely not.
Any other questions?
Kind of a naive question, but relationship between yourself and your coach, is there anything that you don't reverse from the coach? Or can you, or do you get in there and ultimately, you can tell the coach to do whatever you think they should be doing or fire them?
Did you say it with Daryl? Did you say, didn't you say, we went down to his office, didn't we?
We went down to his office, and he kinda didn't look at me, and we walked away.
But then he came up, the next day, he was sitting with us, right? That's when I showed him the picture of you at Notre Dame, and it's like, can you believe it? This is the same guy. Yeah. So you guys were good. Yeah. I don't know. Next time, I'm gonna let you handle that. So you're, maybe you tell him, say, Daryl, you know, you better start listening to Dean to get this thing turned around or something. But that's, that's, is that what your question was?
I was gonna get to Daryl, but go ahead. Answer his question, and I'll ask you about Daryl.
I think it's kind of funny, like, he's, like, we were very similar. Since we always had this argument, who's tougher, who's, your father was a farmer, mine was a factory rat. We're very similar, even though ones, you got a little bit different upbringing, but there's a lot the same. And so first off, like, their personalities have, you know, and that can be good and bad, but the thing is, I think we understand each other, even though maybe we don't like seeing ourselves in the mirror, you know? Or, I mean, looking at each other, seeing some similarities, and like, you know? The one thing, though, that we've had as a staple, we very seldom disagree on the type player we want. Like, if you've got, you know, like in football, if you've got a GM, and like I said, I was meeting with the Chargers there last month, if you've got a coach that wants to play a 3-4, and the GM wants to play a 4-3, you screw it right away. That's an extreme example of being dysfunctional. That's a system. In hockey, it's not so much a system, because there's not as many systems, but it's the type of team you wanna build. You wanna be small, fast, skilled, big, heavy, tough. And generally, that lends itself to, if you believe in a certain way of winning, that generally, you're gonna agree on the type players. And I think you saw a little of that in those meetings. You can break players, they're not bad players, they just have a certain MO. And we totally agree on that, which also, we also have to be questioning ourselves, are we becoming dinosaurs? Because we like that big, physical, but then we've been successful. The thing that, the thing that happens, it's hard on coaches, though, is they are really under the gun. So you have to know when to give them their leeway and let them act. Like, I think when you're in the media, you see a little, whatever. But we've only disagreed on a couple players. And we've been together a long time.
That's what I was hearing about the personnel decisions. When it comes down to, Dan, I watched you guys and your staff talking about personnel and evaluation and so forth. And I wasn't hearing, I don't know what the, if your decision went against the coaches...
Well, you got a problem. Like, there's a difference between saying, I don't want him, then they go, whoa, whoa, whoa. You might have, I've never had to put my foot down like that, because generally, we see the same things. He might be 50-50 on a guy, and it's very different to give him a chance. Same thing with a young player. Look, I don't wanna hear that. Give him a chance, and you better get behind him. That's very different from saying, he can't play. So we've bought, we've had some 50-50s where I've told him, like, you gotta play this guy. And sometimes I've been right, and sometimes he's been right. But to be able, have to go down there and tell an accomplished coach, you gotta, this guy can play, and he's adamant he can't play, you're probably in trouble. That player's either gonna have to go, or the coach is gonna have to go. And if it's a top guy, you're really in trouble. But, you know, I've never gotten to that point. The other thing, too, and I don't know if this is gonna lend itself, where you might have to do as much talking to him about keeping him here, like even Keel, and not getting down on himself as much as you might have to talk about personnel. Like, you might see him, like, I think last year, where he put enormous pressure on himself. It was more like talking to him, like, whoa, you're starting, this ain't the same guy, and I get it. You've been through three years. You need to back off a little. So you could have that many discussions, as you will, about players. So I guess to make a long strike, if you ever get to the point where you say, look, you gotta play this guy, or that's it, and you said, I hate him, you're probably in trouble. Either get rid of the player, get rid of the old, and I've never had to do that.
Was he too intense last year?
I don't know if too intense is the right word.
Too demanding of himself?
I think when you're maybe tired, you get frustrated, you know, and then you get frustrated when your team is not responding. And I think as much as like last year, at times, you know, we'll see, again, I think he's gonna get out of this this year, but I think, you know, it applies to anybody else. I mean, it doesn't have to be just a coach. Sometimes you get really frustrated with yourself, and you start getting frustrated with everybody else. And I think that's been his nature. He's always been a player's coach, And I think that's been his nature. He's always been a player's coach, but when you're not getting to him, you get mad at yourself, but then, in a way, you start lashing out your players. You lash out to GM, you lash out at the media.
And then there's that fine line, where you feel like you might start losing the players.
That's exactly right. You can, and that's where going back to a lot of your talks at times, and that's one thing Daryl may have, because we've known each other, we're the same age, similar backgrounds, that we can talk to each other, not necessarily at times as boss and coach. You don't want to have to play that card. We're on the same page here, you know?
Now, just for reference, Daryl Sutter's the head coach of the Kings. You had, you had him in San Jose also as your head coach. So you hired him to come to LA, and then he went to Stanley Cup right off the bat.
Yeah.
So you say you communicate well. How, he, he's, he's an odd communicator. I've seen his press conferences. He's, he's like Bill Belichick with a sense of humor before the media. Like, it's all one-liners. He doesn't want to answer much, zingers, with a little more of a sense of humor. What's a typical conversation between the two of you like?
It depends, you know, it's...
He's sort of philosophical.
Well, that's the thing. Everybody thinks he's, like, he's this farmer from Western...
Like the zen kind of guy.
Well, the first thing, there's a, there's also, like, everybody thinks he's this farmer from Western Canada. Guy had a full boat to Princeton. So, but he plays this dumb farmer card. Like, I don't know if I'll call him.
And he's got the accent down.
He's got, you know, the whole thing.
Don't you know, yeah, you know?
Like, okay, Daryl. And then when I tell people, yeah, here's the Princeton guy right here, and, you know, it's... So my point is, he's got a good mind, you know, as if he's been educated and had a good mind. And, uh...
So he's putting people on half the time, is that what you're telling me? A little bit?
No. What I think he's doing... It's the Scotty Bowman, and I think Belichick's got that. When he's talking to the media, he's talking to his players. Everything he's saying is calculated to get to the player. So he's turning around the media, say, okay, I'm gonna play your game, but the purpose is not for the media to inform you. It's to, and it, it's worked at times. I mean, he was literally a Stanley Cup player. The players were running to watch his press conference and just cracking up.
Yeah.
And, and so they were kind of all, you know, they were saying, what's he gonna do now? And, but it was, keep, the other thing coaches have to do, don't forget, is keep them here. So if, if this team's going bad, he's generally here. And then if they're going too good, he comes in, he's an absolute jerk, and everybody's going like, what's he doing? Well, he's keeping them here. That's what happened last year, though. It didn't happen. It never got, it was always here and never got here.
The great ones know how to keep the players on edge.
But there's a method to it. There's, there's also, like, see, and the media's part of that. They say, okay, these players read the media. He's thinking, okay, I'm gonna take a little subtle shot here. And the other thing he's doing, it's kind of what I talked to today, don't forget. He's very cognizant, because he was a former player. He doesn't, and he walks the fine line, like Tortorella blew it, like, because I hired John. And I told him this, you know, before I hired him for US team. What can happen, like, he's, by, by showing you're not a media darling, you're telling your players that this isn't what's important. But if you go too far, you start becoming the show by trying to be too standoffish with your one-word answers. And that's what happened to Tortorella. He went way too far. Like, if you, if you know John, like I know John, I know, a lot of times, he's ticked off the media, because he's trying to protect his player. He really was. And he gets pissed off if somebody says something about him, and then the town comes out, and he's like, and then he gets, I got, I got no time for you. Well, you can't do that. So he lost control of the situation when his goal was. But his goal there, like I said, is to talk to his players through it, and one of the messages you're sending is, I'm not the show. But when you start coming out with those good things, you are the show. Now, so you're defeating your purpose, and that's what can happen. But there's a conscious thing there that he's, that the good ones can do. Because one thing I do know about Daryl, he's like me, you know, like, when we win, it's like, let's go sit in the garage and have a six-pack. I don't want to go to parades. I don't want to do this other stuff. And, you know, I know that about him, you know, that this isn't about making me the show. But you gotta be careful. Like you say, you start ticking you guys off a little too much, and then the other way.
So you got a coach who knows how to manipulate his players.
Manipulate. I see that's a bad...
Right?
Guide. Am I right?
Guide, okay. Use the media. Last, last season, there was three garbage cans and a locked door. Tell me about that. I've read, I've read conflicting reports.
No, you're right. But to me...
And how did you handle it?
I told them...
They don't know what it is. Tell them what it is.
Well, the problem is, the media had it wrong, because it, when the story surfaced, that you, the garbage cans, where they said it was in Vancouver near the end of the game. So actually, I hadn't even heard about. So I go down to my trainers, I go, what the heck is this about? He goes, nah, it didn't happen in Vancouver. That happened in Tampa.
Hold on, let's give a little context. There was a story that the players locked Daryl out of the dressing room, and they used three garbage cans as a barricade to keep him out after a game. Go.
Right. So this was near the end of the year, when we were really, you know, we were on thin ice, making the playoffs or not. So I go down to the trainers, say, what happened here? You know, it's not a fire drill for me anyway. I was like, what happened here? Plus, that happened in Tampa a long time ago. I go, really? And he goes, yeah. He says, you know, the team won. They were ticked off at him. So Greener put garbage cans in front of the thing, and, and went out the other way, and he couldn't get in. That's all. So then I looked at it, and that was the start of an eight-game winning streak.
Right.
So, so then the media comes around, and they ask, says, well, let's just, hey, they go on an eight-game winning streak, but, you know, put a tank in front of the, could get the room, as far as I'm concerned.
But the media was playing in, like, play a revolt.
Right. But, but in the end, too, this is the other problem, was talking about today, like, we know the player's gonna be responsible. Like, it's like I told him, I said, that's great. Like, the totally, the media came, they're looking for a revolt. I said, you know what? I got no problem with it, because that's the state we're trying to get to. Will the players run the room? When your players are in charge of the room, like Taves does in Chicago, I'm sure Brady does in New England, Bird did in the Celtics in Oregon, you know, that's when your team will be a dynasty. If the coach has got to go in and every time raise the emotion level, then you're probably in trouble when you got the wrong guys. So actually, I said, you know, that's good. You know, if they want to take over the room, throw the coach out, I'm fine with it. And, and then, like I said, the irony is, we, that was our best stretch right after that game, and we went out and ran.
How did Daryl take it?
Oh, he's not gonna let you know what's getting to him.
Well, he'd let you know.
No, he did. He kind of liked my answer. He bailed him out.
You brought up Vince Lombardi before.
Yeah.
How many times in your lifetime have people asked you if you were related?
Yeah, every, every time, and they asked me, because I cited him today. They asked me three more times, so... Family tree's gotta be in there somewhere.
Somewhere. Same boot, Daryl came from the same boot. Well, seeing we brought him up, he's often, and still, to this day, he's been gone for 45 years, people, and you quote him.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, if you go online, you could find the top five Dean Lombardi quotes of all time. There's a website. So I'm going to, I'm gonna, this is my, this is my David Letterman act now. I'm gonna read them. I want you to put them in context, tell us what it really means. Ready? Number one.
Wow. Are we running out of time?
No, here we go. This is the best part. I've always felt we weren't physical enough on the back line. Now there's a no parking sign out in front of our net.
Oh, that's, all right, yeah.
What's that mean?
What year was that?
That doesn't matter.
Well, we were much more physical, not getting pushed around. I mean, clearly, when I first got there, any team, too, don't forget, you might not like the identity. Same with a person. You might not like what that person stands for, but if he has an identity, his chances of being successful and going beyond are much better than if you're just vanilla. And that's actually one of the problems I got in the backend, you know, when I lost that kid. So we made it very clear that we were gonna change, and we were, we might lose a game. We're not getting run out of building. We're not gonna let people stand in front of our net. So that's where you get some of those physical guys and make them pay a price.
Number two. This, this one will go to the sports management guys. You'll like this. At the end of each year, I make a list of my mistakes, and it's pretty friggin' long.
Yeah. Which I tell you, I do it for the owner every year. I got a slide that goes up. I tell him, he's a, the 10 things that, why we should be better is the one heading, and then you put down. Last year, I had seven. And then, things you're concerned about, put that list down. And then when you go back the next year, he looks at what you did. And, and that's, I always told him, I'll be honest with you, you know, so I'll put down the things that I wanted to do, that didn't do. Like I told you, it's the 50-50. If you're 50%, you're going to the Hall of Fame, because you gotta put down the things you wanted to do that maybe the other team didn't want to do.
Are you checking your list during the season?
Yeah. Well, like, at the end of the year, say, well, I was stupid, or, you know, thank God he's as dumb as I am, or, you know, dumber than I am. The, uh, but that's, that's the only way you really get better, right? You tell your players, you know, that you gotta be able to critique yourself, and I think that's the big thing being lost on these guys now today. I think it's probably the number one thing, is these athletes can't look themselves in the mirror and critique themselves. And there's always an excuse being made, and so it has to apply to you, critique yourself. Well, and that's the only way you're gonna get better, right?
You're almost jumping to quote number three. Let me stick, let me go to the next one. It's a curse, voodoo. As soon as a guy gets put on the cover of the hockey news, it's like Sports Illustrated. He goes right in the tank.
Yeah. It's unbelievable, isn't it?
Can you cite an example?
Every guy that gets on there, the Sports Illustrated, look at Kopitar. He was on the color cover, and he had his worst year ever after that cover on Sports Illustrated. So, you know what it is? It's simple. You know, lose that guy, success is an awful teacher. And that's what happens. And, and having gone through it now, I remember we won the first cup, and I, I spent a lot of time with the 49ers, because we had a lockout. And that was the great 49er teams, Walsh and McFay, like, these guys were really had it going, boy. And they were amazing. And the things he told me, because look out for this, and he gave me the whole checklist that is lunch, this, 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 this will happen. And, and at the time, you don't understand it. But he says, Dean, you're probably not gonna understand what I'm talking about, but trust me, once you go through it, this is gonna make sense. And he was dead on.
Is it about fighting complacency?
It's either complacency, the selfishness, the envy, all the things it can lead to, and the expectations. It's a very, very, like, the 49ers, if you read the history, almost blew up after the first...
Oh, I used to cover the NFL. I covered Walsh. He's...
They were almost gone. And then they, they stuck with it another year, and then they went on to win four more.
Yeah.
But what happens is, the whole dynamic changes, expectations. It's a lot, that's, you know, your Oakland A's thing. I mean, there's no expectations here. If you win, you're a hero. If you don't, well, it's not your fault. Well, that's very different than being the Yankees, or, or the Red Sox, or, or, you know, Canadians, where if you don't win at all, you get no good. And that's, I think that, that's a mindset that we still haven't, it's kind of weird to say you won two championships, but I'm not sure we still haven't gotten that part yet.
That's your job, keep on your toes.
Well, then, you know what? Then that's why you get, get on me for taking another job and all the stuff on my plate. And then you got me sitting here with you for three hours.
Hey, man, I'm just doing the job.
I think you're enjoying maybe ringing me a little. I'm starting to smell that there's, there's starting to be...
Come on, there's a couple more. Hold on. Just one's my favorite one. Every good army needs a couple of criminals.
Right.
What's that mean?
Well, that was said long before I got the criminals I had this year.
Well...
That's a whole nother issue. I was talking about criminals on the ice when guys got suspensions, that it's no different than, you know, you see in baseball, if a guy's prowling the plate, you might have to throw at him a little bit. And I know, again, that's old school and stuff, but you still see it debated, that it's the same thing in hockey. If you're gonna run our best player, and you might have to do something you don't want to do, that's gonna get you suspended, to make sure that that don't happen again. And...
That came from years ago, since Dave Schultz and the Philadelphia Flyers.
Again, that kind of, but that was my, that was Owen Nolan. I mean, I now remember that quote, and that's... It's within the game, when I say the criminal. Like, he got suspended for four games, but it was in response to one of our guys getting run. And it basically says, you're not gonna do that with us. And whether you like it or not, that's part of sport, is sticking up for each other. Sometimes you gotta get close to the line, and that's what they did. Again, it's no different in baseball. If you hit me, I gotta throw at you.
Alan will like this last one. It's a little sociology in this one. In order to see the world clearly, you must clean the windows of perception. The only problem is, our society doesn't do windows.
Did I say that?
Yes. I'll take credit for it, because that's really good. No, you did say that.
Yeah. What was that one you responded to?
It was just a list. You can't imagine yourself saying that?
I, I guess I could put the context. I don't remember that one. It's not bad.
What do you mean?
I'm not, you know, 90%, well, I know what I mean. I mean, we all know, well, the same thing is saying, everything's perception, you know? Perception is reality.
People are afraid to self-assess. Is that what you're trying to say? We're not willing to do the windows, to see what we're doing wrong?
No, I, I think sometimes when you talk about, there's a perception that, you know, like, you might have a perception of a player or something that's not real, that only you can know as a general manager or a player. Maybe that was it, I'm sure. That's, that's the one thing you're...
About being honest with yourself.
Yeah, but also, don't forget what fans, a lot of times, their version of a great team guy isn't even close. I mean, you've been in the locker rooms, and that guy who's, no offense, I know you're in the media and stuff, but when they're good buddies with the media, you probably don't have the guy you want. There's a level of dealing with the media, but when they're too chummy, he's probably selling out some things that you don't want. And, and I...
Or setting himself up for his next career.
Like, or that, right. Because I've talked to you, like, you guys know, like, there's a lot of guys in your business, as much as, you know, you got a lot of hackers out there now with blogs and stuff. But there are a lot of guys in your position who know what that locker room should be like, and actually, you know, they can tell you. So that perception thing, so the media, or the fans' perception of a guy, that they think might be this great leader and everything, or just like, oh, this guy is so far off the launch. You know, so, but, you know...
Should high school kids be allowed to play professional sports?
Yes.
Why? I heard you were passionate on this.
Well, I, that, that, well, I don't know if it was in context of high school, but I really got fired up with his book, and Maurice Claret just drove me crazy. I think that story is repulsive, and I think it's, and in his case, he knew he couldn't play at high school. But for what they did to him, you know, I don't know if it was his sophomore year, freshman year, he wanted to come out and equine in a way they, they buried him.
240 pounds, wherever it was, fantastic. Physical maturity.
But the other thing, the thing about it, too, though, like, I don't know if the issue should be, should be allowed to play, but you should, you have to draft them, right? Because the one thing is, if, if, if you're drafting an 18-year-old, you have to make an investment in him. And that's the problem with this college thing. Like, as a, as a general manager, I would love to have them all go to college, pray in college, watch them. Not have a minor league system, and get to watch them also develop, because, you know, 21, they're more mature than 18.
But it also increases your success level, knowing that you've seen them more, you've seen them develop. I have a good idea what they're made of, what, what makes them tick. Where if you take a shot at a young guy, he could be a total bust, or mental midge, and he doesn't work out.
And, you know, so, but the, but the 18-year-old, too, if, even if he's drafted and go to school, at least you have to take ownership in him and try and develop him. So the kids that we draft that go to Wisconsin or North Dakota, you're, you, you take them in, even though they're still going to school, you're still working with the coach and that, to, okay, we're at least doing our part to try and bring him along. We'll, we'll pay for some of his development in the summer, and we'll leave him in school. So there is a little bit of a partnership there. But this other stuff, these kids, the Maurice Claret thing is, you know, that's disgraceful.
Where are you on AAU sports for pre-high school kids?
That's right. I got the line from Chris Heron. I talked, you know Chris, right? He was the one who used the line, because he said it's happened to my kid. That I'm held hostage on weekends. I gotta get, I gotta get in a car and drive five hours in this, he said it's ruining sports in his neighborhood.
The elite team, elite travel.
He says, my kid shouldn't, and he's, obviously, he was an elite player, his kids are elite players, he shouldn't have to do this. You know, my wife's gotta get and take him here and here, and it's literally what he said, I'm a hostage on weekends, and this is crazy. And he says, my kids aren't growing up like I did, even though obviously...
Instead of playing in the local league and developing town, kind of thing?
And it's funny, too, like, some of those guys, too, that made a lot of money on it, the shoe contractors and stuff, you're starting to see them come out and apologize for this, because this has gotten way overboard.
What happened? Is it, is it parents thinking there's a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow?
No question.
I always said, no, I'm, I'm on my board for the Little League in town. I coach in other sports. And I've always said, the worst thing about these sports is the adults.
I totally agree. It's, and the only thing I've seen, it's not only the pros, though. Like, I was talking to this kid there back in California. In the parent's defense, it's not only the pros, but the college education's so expensive, that they're actually saying to their kids, okay, it's not to get the pros, but I need that 40.
I know you're 12, but we're playing for tuition.
Right, exactly. So, you know, it's like, okay, at least it's not the pros, and maybe the parents gotta, you know, like legitimate beef, that if it's 40 grand, they go to Michigan or whatever, I, you gotta play, because I can't afford this. So you can almost clothe it in some humanity. So you can almost clothe it in some humanitarian gesture, but, but then the kid has to go through it, and how many kids just quit by the time they get there, burned out? It's like this kid gets a specialty coach for running, specialty coach for throwing, specialty coach for hitting, and she was nine years old. And I mean.
And the money that they're spending on this.
Well, and that's what the thing.
Save that money and send them to college.
Well, it's funny, right, but she said, my father said it all the time, well, you gotta get that college scholarship, so it wasn't like she was gonna be a pro softball player. So, you know, I, I'm not sure what the answer is, but it's gone overboard, and then the quit kid quit. By the time I got there as a freshman, a football, one of the best players in the country, she says, I just had it, I was sick of everything.
And burn them out?
Yeah, so.
Couple of quick ones and we'll get back to questions, but you had a rough offseason previous year, you kinda touched on it quickly. You had a domestic abuse situation, you had two players with drugs, and you made the comment that it's time to get our heads out of the sand, and you felt like maybe that you didn't see it coming, or maybe you should have been more ahead of the situation. Talk about that and what you've done since to be more proactive with your players.
Well, it, it, it's like I said at the end of it, what I was talking about, where I, I think these guys have a lot harder, they're more susceptible to temptation and everything than the average Joe, I think it's gone the other way, in terms of the role model thing. And the fact of the matter is, there were signs on my players, as there's been signs throughout the league. What I've learned from this too, like, with, with a smoker's fire, usually you kinda wanna, and I heard rumors, well, you know, you know, I'd heard the rumors about Mike Richards in Philadelphia, but you, you're hoping to, and a part of it is, that, you know, 'cause, you know, we went through our stupid stage, and, you know, you, you hope people kinda grow out of it, you know, and you're thinking, okay, you heard the rumors on Jeff Carter, you know, now look where he is now as a pole, so we kinda grew up, got out of his system. But I heard a rumor, like I said, there were rumors on Jared when I got him from Edmonton, I called him, I asked him when I first traded with him, here's a rumor on you and him, that you're messing around with cocaine, oh, no, oh, no. And he played great for us, you know, he was really freaking good, and Mike was not the same player, but.
No, I, I read that you talked to some law enforcement people, some drug abusing people, you wanted to get more schooled on what the signs were and how to.
Yeah, because I was, I kept going, asking, what else was out there? Like, I grew up during the pod cocaine generation, so you kinda got a feel for what it does to people and everything else, and I'm thinking, what are you guys doing? And then, you know, where are they getting it? You know, in the old days too, like, if your players, like the Bruins were like this, Harry, so that's why I went to see the, the chief of police in Manhattan Beach, just, one thing Harry Sinden had, he knew every bar in Boston, that you didn't wanna be seen in this place, or that place, or with this guy, or that guy. So, and actually, he was kinda working with the police, where the police would call Harry and say, well, Cashman's hanging around here, and you gotta get him out of there. I tried to do that with the chief of police now, and it's the opposite, they say, Dean, they don't go to places anymore. The way the technology is and everything else, it finds them, and a lot of these players don't wanna go to bars and everything, 'cause of the pictures and stuff. So you're, you're trying to find a way to get a handle on what these kids are dealing with. But then the key was, just Dean, when there are high-priced guys like this, it finds them, they don't have to go looking for it. And then when you think, like I said, they think they're invincible, and then it's only one thing, and then they kinda, one thing leads to another, and then you get involved in some of this other stuff that, you know, if it's OxyContin or something, this stuff is killer, and so.
I thought that workshop you had when I was out there on domestic violence was one of the best I've ever, ever seen. Those two psychologists, that was really, really terrific, and it seemed like your players were listening very intently to that. Have you seen any signs that that may have made, had an effect on them and the way that they think?
I, I think so, I, I think there's.
And was it follow-up from that, that group, are they coming back again?
Yeah, they'll be coming back, 'cause that's the thing, you wanna get that, that group to be hanging around the wise limes, they haven't done the wives yet. So they're gonna be doing the wives in a couple of weeks.
The wives, wow.
Oh, for sure, domestic violence problems I've had, actually, with the two before that, were the woman beating the man. And so, but, but again, too, the other thing that happens, don't forget, is a lot of these relationships for these guys aren't really formed for the right reason. I mean, there's, they got a lot of money and, you know, I'm not sure that, you know, the trophy, wife and everything is not exactly sometimes the best way to, you know, sometimes it starts right here, but in the meantime, we have to, you know, try and make them aware that you can't be doing this stuff. But, like, the kid that got in trouble there, well, he's a Russian, it's a different culture, he had no clue. You know, that's why I took responsibility for, if I had run that class before this incident, I guarantee it wouldn't have happened. One, the players would've stepped in, and two, he would've known, you don't do that in this country. That's what really ticks me off, you're talking about critiquing yourself, like, that, that really, I'm convinced that that wouldn't have happened if we had had that program in place.
Do player agents ever get involved, or do they ever get in your way, at some point, when you wanna deal with the player?
Well, as I said, the biggest way to get away is the drug thing, they can hide the drug use, and I find that, there's some agents who are really good, where that player, like, there's one guy who got traded, but he knew he had a drug problem, GM called the agent, he said, if I take this guy, you agreed it. The agent was totally good, he's a carrier, in reality, it's who cares about the player. Because what can happen, you wanna keep burying it under the rug, the guy's career's gonna go down the tubes, he might end up dead. But you're trying to go and think short-term and collect your fee, where you're better off, let's get it out in the open, get it fixed, and let's move on.
By sweeping it under the rug, you're just empowering the guy.
You're empowering the guy, and he's not gonna get better, but it's the, it's the thing, well, maybe it will get better, and that's exactly what happened to my guy. If it, and it was all under the rug all that time, and as a general manager, you'd rather have this thing that come to you, say, look, your guy's got a problem, you're gonna have to pay him, he's gonna remain on your cap, and he's going away for five months, but we're gonna clean him up. I'll take that any day of the week, 'cause I'm guaranteed to get my player back, right? Some of this stuff they get on, you need to be put away. You can't be doing this, like a phone call or something like this, what a bunch of garbage. And so, I'll take that any day, then like, well, I gotta sit there and guess what the heck's the matter with this guy, and then you gotta go, well, something's not right here, but you're not allowed to test them, you're not allowed to say anything, well, how's that solving any problem?
Twenty years after taking the San Jose job, how much more complicated is it to have, to be a GM, you're dealing with all these complex issues off ice, as well as putting a winning team on the ice? Is it the same job as a GM, that much?
Well, no, I saw my whole summer being a social worker, like I said. I mean, I had the woman come in just this past week, does the NFL, talking about how to, you know, the Patrick Kane lesson. You know, that you go into a bar and you, you know, you wanna put your hands on a woman in the air, or think that she says yes, well, that's not yes anymore. I mean, they had to all be educated in that. I mean, I'm gonna have to start a whole department, I hired a guy just to handle all this stuff right now, so, but they're not equipped to deal with it. Like I said, I mean, there's no, it's, it's too much too soon, or whatever, and everything's been covered up for them their whole life, like, you should see that study, Professor, she showed this thing that Harvard did, that shows that these athletes now, they're more prone to all this stuff because of just what we're talking about. It was really interesting what she put up, that this now stuff is showing up scientifically, that they're the least likely to be role models because of the way they're called from fourteen on up.
And the entitlement thing is in that.
It's what's on their hand, I mean, it's starting now at fourteen versus it probably started when you got to college. Now it's starting with these elite programs right when they're fourteen. And if you've got an agent at fourteen, you're probably, you're probably not hearing what you need to hear, which is what all these kids have, and.
This is kinda old school, but it came from someone who played in the NFL for fourteen years, I was Tom Jackson's producer for years at ESPN, and when we first hired him, I went on the road with him, and he said to me, you know, this is the first time I've ever had to actually pick up my own bag. Now, think about it, you're an elite athlete, you go to college, you, someone picks your bag up, throws it either in the bottom of the bus or on the plane, and in the NFL, you don't see your bag. You've got training room people, this, 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 it's the first time I ever had, he never had a credit card. He's like, I haven't had to pay back, you just cash this, cash that, you're on per diem, whatever, it's like re-enter, re-entering society almost. And it was ama, it was a revelation to me, 'cause I never thought of it that way.
Even back then, huh?
And that's, and he came out in eighty-seven, he retired. So I can't imagine what it's like now, with, like as Alan said, the pampering from like teenage years, all the way through, and now, the money. Any other questions?
There you go. My question is, when you spoke this morning, it was very clear that you have a sense of responsibility and pride in representing the Team USA with your role. And how do you put or induce the same responsibility or feeling to these athletes on top of this conversation, I think is the good question. Can you, how do you bring them to the same page and feel the same values and responsibility to the country with you?
Because the players' values are not where they need to be?
Players seem to be very entitled, have grown up in different ways, how are you gonna bring them into the same page and feel the sense of responsibility to the country?
Well, the one thing, as I said about the World Cup, I think because it's a short tournament, there's no contracts, and so there is no question of them loyalty to that jersey. So I'm not, and for a shorter tournament, you're not dealing with, you know, it's, it's not the same as the challenge with the big club, where you're with them, and you're trying to establish a culture to last for years. I, I, I think I said this to kind of students, 'cause I've had to do a self, like I had a, this whole thing with the drug thing just really killed me with one of these players, it, it just, you gotta understand the way I felt about this player, and, so you can go one of two ways, and I think it's probably a combination. I think I've gotta move, I was, like I said, you can have the relationship I had with these players where I liked my own kids. And, 'cause I don't have any kids, and my wife used to always say, you've got twenty, you don't. But then you get, you set yourself up to be just devastated when something like that happens. Or you could be Billy Bean and treat them like a commodity, that they're not human beings, just turn them, burn them, and whatever. Probably gotta bring this a little here, I ain't going here, but I gotta get this a little more here, and then get it here, and then do everything you can to educate them, but you gotta be a little careful, they're not your kids. But I ain't treating them like a commodity either, so that's a huge adjustment for me, 'cause I do think it's one of the reasons we've been successful, 'cause we did, like, other players have talked, this is like a family, well, that's because we do treat you like a human being. But the problem is, if you make a mistake on a human being, it could kill your cap, and so you gotta be a little careful here. So, we'll see how I do. But this, this one incident with this player, just, it knocked me and my socks off, so.
Is the league doing enough?
I think it's a combination, I think it's the league and the union. Probably got, from the league's perspective, once they get the cap, they're tend to give away everything else. The other thing is, I think there's a conscious thing that their learning's not working, 'cause more and more stuff is coming out now, that this isn't a King's problem, 'cause people have known for years that this is a league problem. So, the prob, they have to make a choice where, are we gonna just keep sweeping this under rug and make believe we don't have a problem so we can keep our image up, there's the image of a hockey player, oh, you know, you don't have this like baseball, we do, and we've had it for years. But you like to keep that squeaky, clean thing going, but there's too much smoke out there now, and we're talking top players. So I think the league's figured out that, okay, we tried to sweep this under, keep the brand, but we might have to step up. In fairness, they always get snowballed, the one thing that can happen when the truth gets out about some of this, the public pressure comes on the union, and that's what happened with steroids, right? Once the public didn't like the steroids, and said, you gotta make this deal, we're siding with the league, which doesn't happen very often. So some of this stuff, like you saw the league admit, we have a cocaine, our issue's on the rise, I think that's a conscious effort to get the public to know that when we sit down with the union, we want this fixed, and we want the public on our side, that they want this cleaned up. So, but up to this point, it's a joke, and they know it too, and that's one of the things too, now, like this Chris Heron, I came in and talked to our players, it was unbelievable. You know his story, right, like his hour and a half, I never saw a guy hold attention of athletes for an hour and a half going through his, his fall. It was clearly right from the heart, but also he was relating to the players. And then the league, like, what, what, what's LA doing, you know, and he was like, well, you can't do it, and the players are in the next station, oh, that was really, you know, the league guys come in, it's kinda like listening to your grandfather talk to you, but this guy hit home, so now you got the problem, what do you wanna do? Shut LA down, 'cause they're trying to educate your players, and they're like, oh, you can't do that, oh, yeah, you can, or go ahead, tell the public, you, you're gonna shut this down, 'cause we're trying to help, so there's always that control element too, but, but everybody forgets what the real problem is, you know, so.
Dean, we're running out of time, so I have two questions, I'm gonna convert my first one more into a statement, and, and maybe end with the second. The first is, speaking of Chris Heron, I did work with his board, and as a result, my son received a scholarship, we got to help him, like changing, do that, and keep the cans, and keep the cans, as somebody we're connecting with, and I know how powerful and potent a message that is, and how important it is. I wanna turn that around and say that I thought your message today was very powerful, and your message about the values within sports and raising kids is even much more pervasive and much more necessary. I'm curious, and again, this is the question we don't have time for, and I'm curious if you scripted that for today for sports and social issues for Alan, or if that's a message you've been saying all along, more importantly, I hope that you continue to be a champion for that message, because the Chris Herons in the world deal with the people who are right on the cusp of a fall, and your message starts much earlier, and I hope that, I really encourage when you have the time to write a book or do something, because that was a very, very powerful message today.
No, it's, it's, like, I didn't, like I said, when I picked up, this is exactly what happened, I said today, when I first picked up his book, if you read the underlying thing, he's, he's realigning their values, and remember too, like, I'm in the pro game, but when you're dealing, when you look at seventeen-year-olds for drafting, you know, four or five years ago, I started seeing how different the parents were. And then I started investigating, where's this attitude coming from, which led me backwards, backwards, and then I see it, I talk to the parents around the rink in LA, and I'm like, what are you guys doing? So this is something that has hit me three, four years ago, and now I'm, and I'm seeing more of those players that, you know, grow up in that environment, are now coming to me at eighteen, nineteen, and you're saying, what's going on here? So, and then I remember when you were, and the thing is too, how it, it starts to, it can start here and then filter down, but I remember when he came out to see me, part of his book was, he was one of the first ones challenged with that, that a prep school came after him to leave his local high school, I believe, there's a part where he had to testify that, so he was on the ground floor of understanding, but that was kinda like, unique what was happening to him when he was playing football. Now it's like, it's out of control, and then you got parents leaving and moving to get their kid in this program, and it's, it's absolutely insane, but. I'll try, I'll try.
Alan Sacks, a Dean Lombardi, number one person, I'm hoping, often there's a quiet force behind the scenes, and there was this guy named David Garbic, and put in the first call, and he, for those of you who are here, they have no idea how much David Garbic was behind the scenes helping to make today possible. What was he really like as a student?
We ain't got enough time for that. No, he's a good, he's, he's the guy I'm talking about, guys you grew up playing with when you were a little kid, man, like, we go home, and we'll put ten of us around the bar, and it's like, we never left, and we've known each other since nine, ten, eleven, twelve years old. And, you know, he's a perfect example of what I was talking about, you know, so, but as far as, you know what, we, we could have a whole nother trip coming back, I could tell you some of the stories about this guy. Yeah, he missed his calling, I'll tell you what.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone for coming, I especially wanna thank Dean and Craig for participating in this town hall event. We still have some food and drinks that people wanna have some, I hope to see a number of you guys later on tonight at dinner, and I just wanna thank you for a wonderful day, I know it's been very educational for all of us, and for the students, and for the entire New Beach family, so thank you very much.